Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's City of Casa Grande study session. Tonight, we have our fire department on the docket. So Chief, or Larry, if you want to set it up.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if I can just say a few words before I hand the baton to Chief Keane. I know the mayor and council is very familiar with the fact that for the last several years now, the city has been, as an organization, has been looking at mechanisms and approaches to modifying, updating our facilities and ensuring that we've got quality facilities for our employees and for our residents in the community. And so tonight, what we've asked Chief Keane to present to the mayor and council is a bit of the, of an overview on our existing conditions at our fire stations in Casa Grande. And I know that some of this is, in fact, a follow-up, if you will, an update to a presentation that Chief Scott Miller made probably about a year ago. We've made, we've had to make some, some very difficult decisions recently with Station 503, and I know he's going to cover some of that this evening as well. There may be some questions specifically for that. But ultimately, this is really just an opportunity for the mayor and council to get an update on, on those particular facilities, number one. Number two, to consider some of the concepts that we've been contemplating from a staff perspective, and for ultimately for council to give staff some direction on the next, the next steps. And so with that, I'll ask Chief Keane to begin his presentation.
Good, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, staff. I apologize for the way I look. I planned on getting dressed. I even got a white shirt out and got it ironed and everything, but we had a big fire this afternoon, and we just actually just left that fire and came here. I'm sure most of you guys saw it. It was pretty impressive, along with the 2,000 people that decided to drive their cars over there and block our way too, so. I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak to you guys tonight. I know all of you guys have been very supportive of the fire department, and I kind of wanted to give you a little bit of an overview. I've talked to some of you about some of this stuff before. And I know this is stuff that you care about. Obviously, our membership cares about it because they're, they're here as well. But this is just a study session, so I just kind of want to give you a little bit of an overview of how things are going. And I'm sure you guys have some questions about 503. That was a tough decision, and I'll talk about my reasonings for that and explain it to you. So just a couple introductory-type slides, you know, mission statement or vision statement. I think we're all clear on that. I know you guys have been very supportive of all this. So I don't have great news tonight, but I, I do have one bit of great news. So I figured if I'm coming here, I'm going to give you the good news and the bad news. So the first piece of news is actually going to be good news. We are at 91 people now on our department, total personnel. Six people on the command staff. We have operations at 63. Prevention still has three. We're going to be talking about that very shortly, about that issue. Communications, we still have 19, and office staff. I think most of you guys are familiar. We've talked about the ISO rating for the city of Casa Grande before. ISO comes in and evaluates your city and decides what your rating is based on your response times, based on your comm center, based on your fire prevention efforts, based on your water department. We did that update about five years ago. When I first got here, we did update, and we upgraded from, we upgraded, so the lower your number, the better it is. We upgraded from four to three. I want to report to you tonight that we actually just finished another upgrade, and we got upgraded to Class II, which is very impressive for a small city like this. We're now basically, there's four, four percent of the fire departments in the United States are Class II. So it is impressive, and it's largely because of many of the things you guys have done and supported us with. So that's the one piece of good news. We're now in ISO Class II. The state of the fire department, we were able to move to a Class II because of several things. Our mean, our emergency communication center is functioning at a very high level right now. Laura Martinez is here, our communications center manager. She's done a lot of really great things over there with staff, with training, changing some of the scheduling around, putting some leads in charge and allowing some of our employees to have a little bit more input on the supervision and helping out with that. And obviously, you guys know, you've spent a lot of money on communications equipment. Very shortly, we'll be going live with our 800 system, which we are going to be doing that in conjunction with the county of Pinellas County. That's a huge project. You guys are aware of the stuff we've done. We changed out the antenna at the park over here, and we're doing some upgrades to some of the satellite spots. But very shortly, in the next couple of weeks, the police department will be switching over 100% to the 800 system. And that would be a tremendous, it's not as much of an improvement for the fire department, the 800 system, because it doesn't work well inside of buildings for firefighting and stuff. But the police department's very excited about it. They're going to have 800 capability. They'll be able to speak to any other officers, sheriffs. We had that pursuit a few years ago where they were chasing the guy out here and eventually ran out of radio range. They weren't able to talk to the dispatch and people like that that they needed to communicate with and coordinate with. So that 800 system will be in service in just a few weeks. We are the first agency in Pinellas County that'll be going to the 800 system besides Pinellas County sheriffs. We did a lot of work. We've been meeting a lot with Arizona Water and talking to them about some of our water concerns and some of our issues with our hydrants, and we did see some improvements in that. Our community risk reduction, you guys all know Martha Bender. She does a great job with our public education efforts, and we got, we saw some improvements in that. And the biggest thing that we did, we changed some of our deployment strategies. We are now basically doing active move-ups. When two engine companies from the south side are on calls, we move an engine company from the north down to Cottonwood and Treacle. I'm sure you guys have seen the fire engine parked at the Safeway parking lot. Nobody, nobody shops that much, much. That's where we park them. That's kind of our midpoint in the city, and they park in that parking lot there so that they can still go back north if something happens to the north, but they're also available to come south. That move-up has helped significantly. And then the second part is something you guys did. Well, you guys did it, and then COVID helped us even more. So we put the low-acuity unit in service. We were supposed to put it in service in July, on July 1. Because of COVID and some of the funding opportunities, we ended up putting the low-acuity in, in service back in March. March 17th, St. Patrick's Day, we put it in service. And that's going to be reimbursed to us by the government at about a 75% rate. So we're doing pretty well with that. The low-acuity unit's helping a lot. It's assigned here at Station 1, and it's helping a lot. It responds on low-acuity calls in Station 1 and Station 2's areas. We also use them for times when our private ambulance service is not available, or they tell us, oh, we have a 30-minute ETA. We send our low-acuity unit out there. It's a little bit of a disadvantage for us because it puts them out of service because they have to transport somebody. And the big disadvantage is we don't get to bill for that, so it's a, it's a free ride for that person. But we feel that that's better for the citizens to get them to the hospital quickly. So we end up eating that, but it's worked out really well. Financially, for the department, we're realizing some of the benefits of the SAFER grant. You guys are well aware of the SAFER grant. We were able to hire 10 new firefighters. All 10 of those firefighters are now onboard. Two of them were in the class back at the beginning of the year and have graduated and are well into their probation. The other eight graduated a few weeks ago. We had planned on bringing them in for a swearing-in ceremony, but it wasn't able to happen just because of the COVID stuff. But those eight, including two females in that group as well, so are now on the floor, and they're functioning and doing a great job. Our overtime costs are elevated. Clearly, we understand that, and we know that's an issue, and we've spoken to the city manager about that, and he's aware of it as well. One of the things that we've kind of talked about, Mary Allen's been great with us helping and, helping out with our reimbursements. But the reimbursements that we're applying for right now are reimbursements from last fiscal year. They're from March 17th to June 30th. Well, that's money that's already been spent and gone, and I'm assuming when that comes in, the city manager's going to say, put that back in the general fund. The July 1st to now, that's where my overtime costs are way over, and I don't have that money yet. We haven't been reimbursed, and we're not really sure when that's going to happen exactly. We've been assured it will. There's some talk, originally that was to be reimbursed at a 75% rate. There's some talk with the new administration that that'll be reimbursed at 100%. So we'll see how that goes. So essentially, the COVID unit is costing us much, much less than we originally briefed you guys and told you guys it was going to cost. One of the benefits of COVID, I guess. We've had an increase, a significant increase, obviously you realize, in our PPE, and we've had to change some of our policies, response policies. Our dispatch does a great job of kind of screening them on the phone. If they're able to come to the door or come outside and remove them to an outside environment for us to transport. So we've done a lot of the changes you would expect to happen. There are still some facilities that have COVID patients that are deathly ill, and we still have to enter, which is something we do. Our guys do that on a regular basis. They have to go to facilities and go inside. But PPE is great. We're, we're doing well with PPE, and we've got a good supply of that. I will tell you that we're on pace to exceed our response numbers. We're probably going to be upwards of 12,000. We may even hit 13,000 by the end of this fiscal year. So we are still increasing significantly our call load, and our call load increasing is what causes us issues. The low-acuity unit, it's on there, dynamic movement, moving people to Treacle and Cottonwood for city coverage are things that we're doing to kind of mitigate some of the response gaps. Just put this in here briefly because I got your ear, so I thought I'd bring this up. I know you guys are well aware of this because of all the house permits, but with all the permits being issued for houses and all the new businesses that are going on, that's caused us a tremendous increase in fire prevention inspections. You can see the number there for inspections was 400 last year. This is by calendar year, too, by the way. It was 400, and 2020, it was 1,005. So very significant increase of workload for the fire marshal, inspector. Plan reviews also are very significantly up from what we've had previously. And then on the 83, we've had 83 formal fire investigations for arson investigations or fire investigations that were believed to be suspicious. That's double what we had the previous year. So Mike Webster, our fire marshal, and his people have been very, very busy working on all that stuff. We are, and I know you guys are, you know all about this, and you're very excited. We're all very excited about this. In the next month or two, breaking ground on Phase 2 of Lucid, which is another 2.1 million square feet, which is twice what we have out there. And Lucid 1, the first phase of Lucid 1, was a tremendous strain on our resources. Took a lot of work to get that through, but Phase 2 being twice the size of that's going to be even more. And, and we've got a plan together, and we're working with Mr. Weaver and Mr. Rains on that and what we're going to do with that. Rest assured, it'll all, all be taken care of. I just wanted to kind of bring that up to let you know that it is very, very busy. Nothing's getting slower right now. That's apparatus stuff. So our facilities, this, that's kind of what I want to talk to you guys about, about facilities. That's the main, the main focus of all this, and hopefully I can answer all your questions. Fire Station 501, 119 East Florence. Fire Station 502 is 1479 East 9th. Fire Station 503 was at the airport, and 50, Fire Station 504 is on McCartney. You guys are very well that. That's our new station, newer station that's out on McCartney. So at maintenance costs for these stations, Station 1, 2, 3, and 4, primarily what I want to talk to you guys tonight about is Station 1, 2, and 3. Station 4 is a new station. It is what it is. It's where it is. It's not going to change. We don't have the ability to move it or do anything different with that. But Kevin Lewis and Nick have been instrumental in helping us kind of keep the Band-Aids and keep the fixes going on these fire stations. I don't think there's a day, or at least every other day, that they're in one of our stations doing some sort of work or repair or something because the stations are so old. You guys can read this later. The bottom line is the fire stations that we do have are in disrepair. They've surpassed their useful life. Fire station designs now, when you design a fire station, you're typically designing a station for a 50-year lifespan. So, you know, if you build a fire, a little tiny fire station, that's not going to be good enough in 50 years. You're going to have other issues and problems. Right now, Fire Station 501 is 70 years old. Fire Station 502 is 25 years old. Fire Station 503, which I think most of you guys, I'm sure you've heard this because I hear it like four times a week. Oh, I went to high school in that trailer. Oh, I had gym class in that trailer. Oh, I had fencing in that trailer. I mean, I hear every story in the world about what people did in that trailer. As near as we can tell, that trailer was built in 1973. It was here at the high school, and at some point in the 90s, it was moved to that site down at the airport. Essentially, what I'm here to tell you guys about tonight is that the current and growth of the city has rendered our fire stations inefficient for emergency response. And I'll kind of go into some of the reasons for that, but it's increased our response time somewhat. And, and it's not just our response times. I'll talk to you guys a little bit about some of the other stuff. It's the getting back to the station, getting back into the station, and getting stuff set up for the next call that we're going to be going on. Skip over that one. So Fire Station 501 is built in the 50s. It's about 70 years old. It was expanded in the 80s. About 40 years ago, they added that third bay on the east side of the building. That third bay that's on the east side of the building will only support small support vehicles. It won't, it won't fit a fire engine or a ladder truck in there. The station's out of OSHA compliance. I didn't bring them with me, but, and I'm, and I, and I hope when this is done today, I hope you guys reach out. If you guys, any of you would like to go look at the stations and see some of the stuff I'm talking about. Donna's already been out with me. She wanted to look at 503, so I took her out and showed her 503s. And we went to 504s also, and I kind of showed her what things should look like. And then we went to 503s, and she saw what things did look like. And, you know, we'll, we'll let her express her opinion about that. But we have issues at the fire stations. It doesn't meet any of the ADA compliance criteria. We have seven people assigned to Station 501. And don't get me wrong, I love Station 501. I like old fire stations. It's just basically outgrown and outlived its usefulness as a fire station. The dorm rooms are an open-style concept. In other words, the men and women all sleep in the same room together. There's one bathroom and one shower in the station for seven people. There is a toilet out on the apparatus floor. 501, you guys know kind of is our, is our, it's supposed to be our crux. It's our highlight. It's our downtown station that, that, it's Station 1. It's our busiest station in the city. It has an engine company with four people. We keep our low-acuity unit there. We also, with a city as small as we are, we have a lot of companies and equipment that is basically swing companies. For example, when we have a fire like this and we need a ladder truck out there, we don't have a ladder truck that's in time. It's not in service 24/7. They have to jump off the fire engine and man the ladder truck and bring the ladder truck to a fire. So we have a need to store, again, my thanks to you guys. You guys have been nothing but kind and wonderful and very supportive of equipment and apparatus for the department. We have top-of-the-line apparatus, top-of-the-line equipment. But when you have top-of-the-line equipment, you want to keep it inside so it doesn't get damaged or sit out in the sun, and we don't have that at some places. We have stuff sitting outside that shouldn't be sitting outside. We keep a reserve ladder truck, a reserve fire engine, and our reserve ambulance at Station 501. So it's very, very crowded. And like I said, if any of you guys want to go tour, we'll be more than happy to take you over there. Station 501 handles the downtown area. They go to Interstate 8. They handle the railroads. They handle the west side of Casa Grande Mountain Park, Francisco Grande, Grandy Squirtz World. They have a huge industrial manufacturing area. You guys are aware of all this stuff out to the west. They're the first-in-engine company for Lucid. They have some very busy highways, Gila Bend Highway, and that, out that way, we get a lot of bad accidents out there. They're also first-in on a lot of those things out there. They're also first into Abbott, Frida Lay, and our SRP plant. So that fire station is protecting some facilities that are worth millions and millions of dollars in the city. It's a very important cornerstone to our fire protection in the city. As with all of our fire stations in the city, every station, we have programs. Our captains and stuff are assigned a program to take care of because there's only five chiefs on the department, and we can't do everything. So we have captains that are assigned programs, which is great because they take care of that. Our hose management program is at Station 501. So if you have a hose management program, you also have to hold, store all the hose. So there's a room there that's completely filled with hose. It can't be used for anything else other than storing hose. Our wildfire management program is there. That's where we keep our wildfire equipment. There's different turnouts and different gear that you wear for wildfires than you do for structure fires. We also have different radios for wildfire. So that's stuff that we have to keep secure in a room and all the wildlife training records and all that stuff. Our guys go to a fire and their pants get ripped or their turnouts get ripped. We have to have extra PPE, personal protective equipment and uniform stuff. So we have a small storage room there with a lot of uniforms and all the stuff that we issue to our new recruits when they go to the academy. So there's a room dedicated to that there. Can't be used for anything else. It's filled with uniforms and gear. Our fire station supplies, this is what a lot of times people go, what? Our fire stations have supplies. They need toilet, it's, it, there are seven people living there 24/7. So imagine your house with seven people 24/7. You need a lot of toilet paper, paper towels, dish soap, laundry soap, all that stuff. Fire station supplies, that station maintains the supplies for the whole city. They do the bulk purchases, and then they break them up and send them out to the stations. And medical supply restock, we, you guys authorized the purchase of a vending machine that we're putting in the lobby. And that's basically a vending machine so that 503s was the place we stored medical supplies, but we're not storing them there now, so we have them at headquarters. So the vending machine is so the fire engines, when they leave the hospital, could come by. They punch their ID number or scan their, their ID card, and they're able to pull supplies out of that vending machine to restock their fire engine in the drug boxes. That's a good thing for us because those things cost money and they're expensive. So that vending machine is going to allow us to have a much better, an accurate record of inventory. We'll know what we have on stock, what we've distributed out. I know that Tony the False came by and got some morphine. And then I go, why did Tony the False come by and get some morphine? So it, it basically gives us the ability to look and see what people are getting out of there, how much they took, and if there's a valid reason for it, so. It's, it's a good thing. The vending machine's going to be great. Fire Station 502, down here behind Lowe's, was built in 1995. It's 26 years old. It was built at a time when the city was rapidly expanding. I'm told that that fire station was built for $220,000? $250,000. So essentially, it's a-
Bob Jackson's claim to fame.
It's essentially, if you go see it, it's basically, they built a single-family home with a big garage outside. I, I don't want to criticize or slam somebody. It probably was necessary at the time. Not appropriate for a fire station that we have today. It's not OSHA compliant. It's a wood-framed construction building. It's not a commercial building. It is essentially, looks very much like a single-family dwelling that somebody moved a fire engine into. There's a myriad of problems there, you know. We have ice machines in our stations for the firefighters to get cold water. Our ice machine's out on the apparatus floor, so it gets filled with exhaust from the fire engines when they leave. We don't have the ability to move the ice machine somewhere else. There's no room in the station for anything else. There's been talks, I know at one time they were kind of discussing adding another bay on there. Well, there's no reason to add another bay on there because there's no, there's, we don't even have enough room to put a low-acuity or an ambulance there if we get our CON. So it's a four-person station, and that's kind of what I talked about. When you build fire stations for a 50-year station, you don't typically want to build a four-person fire station in this day and age. You want to build a larger station for expansion in the future. Fire Station 502 is our second busiest fire station in the city. It also is out of OSHA compliance. It doesn't meet the ADA requirements. There's four people assigned there, so there's 12 people there, which means in the mornings, at shift change, there's always eight people at shift change. So it's very crowded. We have a lot of apparatus at that fire station that's stored outside. You can see in that picture there at the bottom, our technical rescue trailer. And one of our brush rigs is, are stored outside at that fire station. This is where our ladder truck is and our ladder tender, which is our fire engine that has all the ladder company equipment. We keep a brush truck there, and also our technical rescue team is stationed at that station. It's, again, it's a swing company or, or as they put on the slide here, an adapted response station. They either go on the engine or they go on the ladder tender. They go on the ladder tender or they go on the ladder truck when they go to a call, depending on what kind of call it is. You guys know most of this. They go, they come here to downtown. They go out that way to the promenade. They go to the 10 a lot, Interstate 8 a lot. They cover the railroad, Casa Grande Mountain on the east side, and they go citywide for ladder company responses. They are the ladder company. They go to every fire in the city. This station has all of our technical rescue technicians. We spend a lot of time, and you guys have spent a lot of money on training them up to be technical rescue technicians. We spend a lot of money and grant money on equipment. It's very expensive. So basically, our technical rescue station is in a location that we're just, it's not appropriate, again. They do roof operations, force entry, search and rescue. Some of the programs that are run out of this, uh, let me go to those first. Bill? What stations, what programs are run out of 502s? There's no programs. We don't have any storage there at all, right? Yeah, we don't, we don't have any real programs at 502s because literally that station has the bedrooms for the guys, a bathroom, a kitchen, a training room, and the apparatus floors. There's no like closet space or storage or anything, so none of our programs are able to be run out of that station at all because there's zero storage there at all. Station 503, this is the one I expect probably you guys have some questions about, but I, I think we can answer all of them. It was built in 1973. It's 50 years old. It was built and used here at the high school. It was donated to the city in the 80s. The station, I made the decision, and it was a tough decision, and it was a difficult decision, but we decided to close the station about a month ago, a month and a half ago. One of the reasons, there's, there's several reasons. One, the station has fallen apart. The station is infested with termites. We spent about, I should say, we, you guys spent about $60,000 or $70,000 a couple of years ago redoing all the floor in there because it was so badly eaten by termites. Well, we had an area that, of the floor in front of the bathroom that was starting to cave in. We noticed it was significantly, it's a double-wide trailer is what it is, for, for a better, lack of a better description. It's a double-wide trailer. And when you would go to the bathroom, you would kind of sink down. And we had, facilities came out and did an evaluation of it, and when they pulled up the floor, they were like, I mean, the, underneath the place is just filled with termites. Well, termites, lots of termites- Well, termites, lots of termites are there. So, now there's lots of mice that are eating all the termites. There's lots of mice there. So, then now there's also lots of snakes there eating the mice. Uh, it doesn't matter who you are. Nobody, I don't think anybody likes to have mice and rodents and stuff running across you while you're sleeping in your bed. Even, even tough firefighters don't like that. I don't like mice and I don't like rodents and I don't like any of that kind of stuff. But that has happened. We've had, um, one of our captains was sitting at her computer at night working and she looked down and two mice ran across her feet while she was sitting there on her computer at night. They came in, did an evaluation. It was a, there was a very expensive estimate to come in and do the mitigation on the termites. It wasn't just putting a tent over the station and spraying it. It was drilling down into the, um, ground around the place and doing a lot of mitigation. And it was, I want to say fifteen, eighteen thousand dollars estimate to do that. Um, after they finished that, they would then have to come in and rip up all the subfloor and the entire thing and replace it again, which is another thousands and thousands of dollars to do. So, I came to the realization that it didn't make sense to continue putting money into this fire station. I mean, it doesn't make sense to put, it doesn't make sense for me to put ten thousand dollars into a trailer that, in my estimation, isn't even worth ten thousand dollars. I mean, I don't, I'm not a expert on this stuff, but it doesn't look to me like it's worth very much money because it's so old and it's in such bad shape. And, and that's not to say that our people don't take care of their facilities and their buildings. You go to Station 504, very well maintained and very well taken care of. That station is tough. You got same thing. You got twelve people living there twenty-four seven, all the time. And to keep it in good shape was very difficult. And they, they did a great job doing that over the years. Uh, it's amazing to me that it lasted as long as it did. Station 503 has been a little bit tougher for us. Station 503 houses Engine 503 with our four people. It also has a brush truck. It has our three-thousand-gallon water tender. And we also keep a reserve engine there and some of our mountain equipment, our all-trained vehicle there. That's another station where if a brush fire comes in or we need the ladder, uh, the water tender or a brush rig, the crew can either split or they get on that apparatus and go on the brush fire on the brush rig. This station also had, uh, dorm rooms. It was an open-style, uh, concept. There's no privacy at all. Males and females all slept in the same room. Uh, there's two bathrooms, one shower for the station. Uh, we also spent, I want to say we spent about seven or ten thousand dollars last year solving a sewage issue that we had there because the septic tank had gone there badly. And luckily, fortunately, facilities was able to find a sewer line that was near the, but they had to drill to it and get to that and hook into it so we could resolve the, I won't go into great detail, but you were taking a shower and things were coming out of the drain that you didn't want to shower with. It was horrible. Fire Station 503 obviously handles the north end of the city, goes on the ten, uh, the airport. They also come south a lot. They go to all of our brush fires, wildfires. They also go to state land brush requests out of the city, North Mountain, and any other requests in the city for a, for a water tender. We had programs at Fire Station 503 because we did have the ability to store some stuff there. That was where we kept our medical supplies. We also had just recently built a brand-new wildfire management room to hold all the wildfire gear and the wildfire radios, which is now not working. And some of you, I'm sure, are familiar with, you've, when you're driving down Pinellas, you see, we had a lot of our, uh, training props and stuff that are out there on that, on the grounds of the, um, airport station. I've had some questions about the airport. The airport that's here in the city of Casa Grande, and you guys probably already know this, but I'll say it for the benefit of people listening and watching. The airport is not an airport, airports are indexed by the size and the, the type of aircraft that land there. Our airport's not an airport that requires a fire station to be on the grounds of the airport or at the airport. It's not big enough and we don't have enough traffic at the airport. It was nice to have. It's not something that's required and we need to have. I can tell you that when you do get an airport that needs or requires it, then the FAA helps you pay for the fire station and the equipment there. So, we did not have that situation at this station. Three or four years ago, when I first came to Casa Grande, uh, as the operations chief, one of the things I spoke to you guys about, one of the first things I talked to you guys about was, uh, fire station locations. And I spoke to you, you guys, probably most of you guys remember that were here. I gave you guys a presentation about DECON. DECON is a computer program. It's software that you guys, uh, allowed me to purchase. And it's a predictive modeling tool. It uses historical CAD data. In other words, it takes our information from our calls that we've already run and it plots them where they were and they got the call, how long it took them to get the call and the addresses. It also works in conjunction with ESRI, which is a computer program the city already had and uses, most cities do, that takes into account traffic flow. It takes into account speed limits. It takes into account one-way streets. It takes into account basically all the things for traveling to and from calls. Um, this response model also looks at, Adam also looks at, Adam's the individual program that DECON makes. It looks at availability. It looks at the number of calls you've had. So, it basically takes all that information and it has an algorithm and it predicts response times based on historical data. The reason this is important, and I'm just as guilty of this as other people, but being in the fire service for thirty-seven years, I've seen fire stations built places where they shouldn't have been built. And, and that's not to say it wasn't great that a fire station was being built, but sometimes cities and jurisdictions, and I can tell you, my old city, my old jurisdiction that I worked at, built a fire station at a location because the city owned the property. But it was not where the fire station needed to be. It was not appropriate for the response times. And a lot of chiefs and fire service managers, and I'm guilty of it just like everybody else, after thirty-seven years, you do get some intuition and some experience that tells you, "Hey, I think it'd be great to put a fire station here." Well, that's not always correct and it's not always right. So, one of the things I did when I worked on my master's thesis, one of the things I concentrated on was GIS. And I know you guys all know what GIS is because you guys use them a lot. And we have GIS people here in the city. And that was one of the things that I focused on a lot in my master's thesis, was GIS data and using real data and real facts and real information to make decisions. Basing the information on actual data rather than so much intuition. And that's what we want to do. And I think I've talked to you guys about that before. I know you guys realize the importance of it because you authorized me to buy the, the program. So, what DECON does, we've got almost five years of information in DECON now. So, we can punch information into DECON, um, and it helps us decide where and what we're going to, where we're going to put things to give us the best response times. And it takes into account availability and the amount of time they're on calls and not on calls. So, options. We're going to kind of talk about options and this, um, you know, I have some ideas of what should happen, but I don't get to decide this. You guys get to decide this. And I know it's a hard decision because, um, you get a lot of input from a lot of different sources and a lot of different people. We could either stay status quo and just leave things the way they are. But I haven't seen that out of you guys. I haven't seen you guys just wanting to stay with the status quo. I think we all, I know the firefighters and myself and fire management and I, my conversations with you guys, you, you guys want to see us do what we can do to improve response times and provide better service for our citizens. And that's kind of what I'm advocating. The DECON software allows us to look at recommended locations for fire stations where, when it plots it out, it can tell us what our average response time will be to a call. And it tells us intersections or areas of land that would be the best for our fire station to provide the best response times. And it also allows us to say, "Okay, uh, a year from now, we're adding another engine company or we're going to put the ladder truck in full-time and service where the next one would be and where the next one would be." So, it allows us to, uh, plan for future growth. And that's what's important. And I think all you guys realize, whether we like it or not, I know some people don't like it, but Casa Grande is growing. And I don't think it's going to stop. With some of the stuff that's happening out west, the city's going to continue to grow. And we got to grow to kind of, um, keep pace with it and make sure we're still providing good service. Here's, here's some of the bad news. Uh, this is the stuff that's tough to swallow, but I got to tell you the truth. A fire station costs, the fire stations we're looking at, very similar to Station 504, um, six-point-four million dollars per station. Obviously, uh, we're looking at build cost there and not land cost because we're still looking at whatever the cost of the land is when you find, uh, a parcel or an area where you want to build in. Obviously, I kind of stated this before, but this is obvious to everybody. If we already own the property, it's advantageous to the project. It helps the project because now we don't have to have the land costs added on to the building cost. Our, our job as the fire service managers and basically your technical experts to advise you guys on fire service and fire resources is to strategically place our resources where we can help, help the most citizens. Now, we get some criticism from, about that. You know, we get emails. I'm sure you guys are getting emails too. I'm getting emails that say, "Hey, this fire station, I got land here," or "I got a house here and now the fire station right here by my house is closed." Nothing's closed. We still have everything in service. And by moving Engine 503 over to Station 504, um, it did decrease our average response time slightly, but it was not significant. It was about thirty seconds. I will tell you, and, and I've kind of, this is kind of my term, this is, nobody, this isn't professional, but I, I kind of call this the Florence corridor here. Seventy percent of all of our calls are in this Florence corridor. They're basically between Cottonwood and Jimmy Kerr off of Florence, this area. The other thirty percent are at the jail on Val Vista, are up on Val Vista at one of the housing tracks or at the airport or at Fry's on Pinellas. The majority of our calls, the large majority of our calls are here on this Florence corridor. So, um, I, you know, Francisco Grande, really cool place, really awesome place. We didn't build a fire station out there to protect just that building because it's not, it doesn't make sense. We don't have that many calls out there. So, I get sometimes people go, "Well, I want a fire station right by my house." We all do. But we have to put the resources where they'll help the most amount of people. And that's kind of what we're trying to do with this whole thing. So, th- this is an example of what DECON looks like. And I'll kind of give you a little bit of context and explanation on this. So, don't be alarmed by the white boxes. So, a white box on there means that there's no access to it. It means there's no road or any way to get onto it. And there's no, no houses in there. There's no road, there's no houses. So, the white ones are areas that we don't even look at because we can't, we don't have access to it. And it makes sense. You'll see, you see the white area up on the far north part of the city. There's a lot of places up there that we don't have roads or access to. Um, and you'll see some of the other white areas. So, white areas, we're not concerned about. Green areas, green areas that you see on this map are areas where our fire engines can arrive within five minutes or less. And you see what we got there. There's 501s, you see 502s there, and you see 504s up to the north. The yellow area are areas that it's five minutes or more, basically five minutes to seven minutes are the yellow areas. And the red areas are areas that are seven minutes or more. So, clearly, when you look at this, you can see, if you're out at, uh, Francisco Grande, it's seven minutes or more for a fire engine to get out there. But fortunately, we don't have a lot of calls out there. But you do see where you have the green area, where seventy percent of our calls are, the Florence corridor, we get to in five minutes or less and most certainly within seven minutes or less. The, the reason I kind of did this slide is this is the existing conditions today, right now. Right now, if you look over to the right over there, you'll see a fifty-nine. And what that means is there's fifty-nine areas, there's fifty-nine gen, there's fifty-nine geographical distances or geographical areas. There's fifty-nine of them right now that we get to in five minutes or less. And you can see that over there, the, the numbers are reflected, uh, next to the times on the bottom right over there. Fifty-nine of them. When I go into DECON and forecast where I want the new stations to be, and for obvious reasons, I'm not really zooming this in real close so you can't look and see that it says one, two, three, four, East Florence or whatever, because that property will then be worth fifty million dollars when we try to buy it. But, um, you can see that by strategically moving our stations a little bit, that we can significantly improve the number of areas. We almost doubled the number of areas that we get to in five minutes or less. It goes from fifty-nine up to a hundred and seven. Hundred and seven areas that we get to in five minutes or less. And if you add the seven minutes or less in there, it's really a big number. So, there is expansion, obviously, going on to the east of the city. Um, 502s, you guys know where it is there, behind Lowe's. That station needs to move to the east. It needs to move east. Station 503, the one that we closed at the airport, needs to move south. It needs to come south on Pinellas and get closer to the Florence corridor, or as I call it. When I do these, uh, predictions in DECON or run the program in ADAM, it has the ability for me to lock, I lock Station 504 and I, and tell it, "You can't do anything with 504s." That's where it is. It's a eight-year-old station. That's not moving. So, it's locked in there. So, it leaves Station 504 there. I'm not going to say whether it is or isn't a great location for a fire station, but it's what we got and it's stuck there. So, that's why you see 504s up there. So, you can see with some movement, um, we can significantly improve the response times. On that previous, um, slide, I want to say that response times, the average response time was like, I don't have my glasses on, so I might not see it. It looks like it's about, if you look at the first one, the travel time, it's about five, I think five twenty-five maybe. Am I seeing that right there?
Five twenty-six.
Five what?
Five twenty-six.
Five twenty-six, okay. So, that's five twenty-six with existing. When you go to, uh, a relocation of the stations, it brings it below five minutes, which is outstanding. That's what we want. We love to see response times averaging less than five minutes. I think it's, is it like four fifty-three or four fifty-two? Something like that. So, um, that's kind of where we're at. Tweaking and moving stations around a little bit. And I know this is a big thing and a big endeavor. And I know it's not the status quo for Casa Grande because we've had fire stations sitting in the same spots for years and years and years. But it's what we need to do to make things better for our citizens. It also helps us not have to add personnel and additional resources as quickly. So, that's kind of what we're looking at here. Um, I want to talk a little bit about locations. I don't think this is any secret to anybody. I know it's already been leaked out and I've had council people already speak to me about it. So, I know you guys kind of know about it. Looking at city-owned property in the downtown or civic, uh, civic center area, this property down here is going to be expensive if we try to buy it. So, one of the, one of the places that DECON recommended, and when I saw it, I went, "Oh, man, that's genius." I wish I would have thought of it. But I didn't think of it. DECON thought of it. The natural choice is to build Fire Station 501 here on the City Hall campus and basically turn this area into a City Hall campus. I know there's a lot of strong feelings. People have strong feelings and emotions regarding the auditorium over here. That auditorium's is tough. I get it. People went to high school here and there's some people that are attached to that building. That building's very difficult. It's contaminated with asbestos. Uh, the mitigation to repair or bring that building up to snuff to do something with it is in the millions and millions of dollars. Um, I know there's been different efforts over the years. I've heard people say, "Oh, you know, it'd be great. We could turn it into like a performing arts center." Okay, great. Where do you park the five hundred cars for the performing arts center? There's a lot of issues with turning that. And that's not my decision. That's your guys' decision. But I see a lot of issues with, with that building and with that facility. I will tell you that we see some opportunities to turn that into our fire department headquarters for Fire Station 501. It's a great spot for it. It's what you guys saw plotted on that DECON map. And it gives us a presence here at the City Hall campus and, and basically improves this area significantly. We had, uh, our architect friend do a little rendering just so you could kind of, guys could kind of get an idea of what this would look like, what the area would look like. And before, you guys go super crazy, there's another building on there. Um, I've received some direction from Mr. Rains. Um, when we do this, we probably are going to be looking at probably doing some sort of, uh, upgrade or building a new building for budget, the finance office and Bu- and HR. Um, you guys have been in that building. It's, uh, not really appropriate- It's not really appropriate for the type of business that's going on over there as well. So, this is a rendering of what the fire station would look like, and you see it's still, it changes our campus significantly. It allows for an employee parking lot on the back or the north side that you see over there. It allows for actual, real, genuine visitor parking for the City Hall area. Eventually, we're going to get back to normal where people can come to City Hall and do things at City Hall, but it, it gives a nice parking area for people that are going into finance to pay bills or interact with city officials. So, that's just kind of our idea of what we're looking at. The, the super big advantage of this is clearly what I talked about before. We already own the property, and it helps us solve a couple of problems. It helps get rid of the auditorium, and it helps us add value and public service to this campus area and to help, help everybody. And help admin and finance, another really important division here in the city. So, that's just kind of a rendering. This, there's nothing solid or locked in on this. This is just kind of a, we wanted to kind, yeah, just, we just really wanted to see, does, does the footprint really fit? Would it fit here? Would we be able to see this? And you can see that it does. There's an outline. If you look on the south side of the new admin building, that, that's the outline of the old finance administration building. Because one of the things, obviously, that building has to stay in service and working while they're building a new building. So, that's kind of where we're at. That's what I'm looking at. Obviously, when you talk to anybody, you guys, I don't have to explain all this stuff to you guys. You guys know economic development's booming. I think the outlook is great. I am here to be, and I told, I think I told most of you that when you hired me, that I was here to be a technical expert and provide information to you on emergency services and management. And I'm going to tell you the good with the bad. I had one good thing, I think. I know the rest of it's bad, but I really want to thank you guys for the opportunity to speak to you guys tonight and tell you guys about this. And, and I hope you guys have some questions for me. And that is that.
Go ahead, Jeff.
So, Chief, you, 503's been closed, but it looks to me that the priority is to rebuild 501 before a replacement for 503. Am I, did I understand, understand that correctly?
Well, I, I will tell you that the way to build fire stations nowadays, if you're building fire stations, and I've talked to a lot of people, and I have some experience with this. Before I left my prior jurisdiction that I was at, our city got sued. And we were sued because we didn't have proper gender accommodation for our female firefighters. We had the exact same situation that's going on here. Guys and girls sharing bathrooms and showers. And the city went to court, and very quickly, the judge told them, you don't want to take this to a jury, and you don't want to go, you don't want this to go to court. You want to settle this. And they did settle it. They paid her seven or eight million dollars, and they gave me that seven or eight million dollars to go into six fire stations that our female fires, fires were working at at the time, and make them gender accommodated. Provide separate facilities for living, provide separate bathrooms, and we had to do some ADA. When you're doing construction on buildings nowadays, you still got to do the ADA stuff too. So, we had to do that as well. So, when you do these fire station projects, typically, it's kind of a good deal, and you get a good economy of force. And Kevin could probably help me with this, but when they're building these things, they, they build them in phases. Like, you start at 501s and do the foundation, and then, you know, then you start doing the walls, and then the drywallers start showing up. Well, those foundation guys and wall guys go to your second site. So, they do it kind of in a phased, I don't know what that's called, progressive, there, there's a term for it, but I don't remember exactly what it is, because I'm not a construction guy, but they do it in phases. They try to, you know, you do one, two, and three. Right now, honestly, you know, my preference probably would be to build 503s first. I'd probably start with 503s. 501s, i- if my dream comes true, it's going to take some time to mitigate this issue over here. That building's not a building that they're just going to be able to tear down. They're going to have to pull all the asbestos out of it and, and do a lot of work there. And, and there's some infrastructure stuff. I mean, we're going to have to change stuff on the street and, and other things. So, you know, 503s probably would be where I would start, and then 501s and 502s would be the order.
Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, and, and if I can, just kind of broaden that up for Councilmember Lavender. Obviously, we're having a lot of discussion tonight without what I would consider to be costs and a financing plan or anything of that specifics. Ultimately, we, there, there has been a fair amount of discussion over the years about developing an, a plan and approach that we could bring to the council to evaluate the options that we have. And, and, and obviously, Chief Keen has outlined some of the, the issues that we've got to mitigate. As we look at this overall issue in a much broader perspective, we also have to consider the growth and, and those types of things that are transpiring, which again, is one of the reasons why I think the Deacon system that he talked about is so important to us in, in citing these and, and really identifying, you know, the size of a facility or the location of the facility that we need. But ultimately, what I want to assure the mayor and council this evening is that while we, we have not discussed any of the financing plans today, we wanted to get a general, a general feedback from the mayor and council. It's something that we plan to come back before the council and discuss. I know that we've outlined potential options in the past, but again, this is just a refresher. But the important component, again, that I want to emphasize is that, at least in my mind, we, we have started developing a plan to build, to build another station on what I would consider to be the northwest side. And let's just say that we're going to call it 503. We've not selected a specific location. We've not looked at any types of, of plans at this point in time, but for, for the organization, for the community, we obviously have to have a plan to, to address the fact that we've relocated our crews out of the, out of the temporary station into another temporary station. We've got to find a resolve for that.
Go ahead. Oh, Matt, go ahead.
Thanks. And I like to say conveniently, there always seems to be a good fire, right? When you guys come in for presentation. Thank you. One other thing-
It's very funny that you say that, because I went, they're going to start getting suspicious of us here.
And, and I'd be remiss if I didn't say my mom wanted me to tell you guys that there's a time capsule in the corner of the auditorium building, wherever that happens, but she always tells me that. But the real question I have is, one thing I was thinking about looking at these different stations and, and like the 502 station that's smaller, is there like a, you know, your, your theory of fire response, is there one that has smaller stations that are more quickly accessible to places, or is it all like the bigger stations now? Does that-
Typically, most places are building larger stations because smaller departments like ours have to do what we do. We have swing apparatus where you're on the ladder truck-
And you got it.
If it's not a fire, they jump on the fire engine.
Okay.
And then, I, you know, this doesn't change the fact that I'm still hoping very soon we're going to have an answer on our C O N, and we're going to need to put ambulances-
Right.
-in three of the stations-
Yeah.
-that don't have ambulances right now, which adds two more people to each of those stations, which actually adds six more people to each of those stations, because there's two per shift of the three shifts.
And space for-
And we don't have space for that, so that's-
Yeah, and I don't know about, that's why I'm just asking. I mean, I don't, I don't know if that's something that you guys work with. Another thing is the green and yellow, trying to go quick so we run it, but the green and yellow areas?
Yes, sir.
Do you know what, approximately what percentage of our population lives in those areas right now?
I do not.
Okay. It may seem like it'd be a-
Yeah, I can ask that. I don't, I don't know that.
And then, lastly, with that, oh, with the closure of 503, is our I S O, what you start office, is that affected immediately?
Not affected at all.
Thank you.
I S O ratings are done every five years, or if the jurisdiction calls, calls them in to do another one.
Okay.
I had a suspicion, based on some of the changes that we had made and some of our improvements, that we would improve from three to two. So, we called them and did a, basically a midpoint kind of audit where they did it again.
So, we're good for what, two more years?
Five more years.
Five total?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because I went to 503 at least five years ago, and it was bad then.
Listen, I, I'd be more than happy to take any of you guys over there. It's good that we'll be wearing masks. If you guys want to go, any of you guys want to go tour that station or any of our stations, I can take you and show you what some of the issues are at the stations. You know, 504 is a good example. It was designed properly. It was designed to be a drive-through station where the firefighters come back, they pull around back and drive through. We can't do that now. We got so many apparatus in the station, we can't even do that. So, we're back to pulling into the bay, turning around and backing it, which is dangerous for firefighters. We, you don't want to, but you have damage to equipment occasionally, you have a damage to, we had a door the other day shut, on its own, just shut when an engine was backing up, so we damaged the door. These kind of things happen. Well, that doesn't happen in drive-through stations, because you pull around back and drive in, and you're ready to go for the next call.
Tony, you had comment?
I just have a couple of comments. First of all, to, to thank Chief Keen, because I did have the opportunity to go to both. And I will tell you that, quite frankly, I was ashamed when I went through 503, that we had staff that was there. And that's not the fault to anybody, but our staff deserve better. And there was a couple of things that I walked away with. First of all, the ADA compliant, the OSHA requirement worries me, because I, I feel like we're putting ourselves at a liability as a city, so we need to look at that. And we owe it to our employees to make sure that they are safe at all times, plain and simple. We owe it to our citizens as well, but we have staff that live here and that we want them to be safe. The other thing is that at, at 503, I learned that it is not required that we have, you know, have that at the airport, just because it's an airport. So, you know, looking at that property as a city, if we don't have that there, then we can look at what else can we do with that property, and perhaps what, you know, can we have revenue coming in from that property if 503 is not there or, you know, goes back there? I will tell you, all my questions were answered. I, I know this is a lot of money, a lot of money, but I think that, you know, it's not just based on what the chief wants. If we use the data, and I'm very data-driven, so if we can look at the data, and, you know, the one question that I, I did ask him, I said, you know, if you had to pick and choose, you know, what would you want first? And that's a hard call to make. We do already have, you know, fire stations, and we need to look at what we have to deal with. I'll tell on him that he may not like for me to say this, but one of the things that, that struck me was that perhaps we need to look at the buildings, because we're spending so much money on, you know, our trucks and our equipment. And if we don't have good, safe places for those to be, then perhaps we need to back off of that cost a little bit in order to have a place for them to be at home. So, I, I thank the chief, I thank the staff for putting up with me as I walked through. I, I would tend to say that I don't think that they all knew that I was coming, because there was a couple of dirty rooms that I would have sent them in to clean, but that's another thing, so. But I do appreciate it.
Really quick?
Sure.
Really quick. No, and, and Chief, and I appreciate you coming too, and it, that's, that is one thing, since you've been here, you've been an advocate, you know, for this, and continue to, you know, update us on, on what's going on. So, I, I definitely appreciate, you know, where we are. Of course, it, it is, it is a challenge, you know, you know, when you look at the sticker price, and if you go out to the community and say, oh, okay, we're going to build four fire stations at six point five million, so we have to look at the taxpayers. Of course, our, our staff is very, very important, but we have to figure out how we're, how we'll pay for it. And I think the only thing that concerns me is, you know, when you go to other cities, whether they're smaller or bigger, you know, I, you know, you're from a big city, and you know, you go to these neighborhoods, and they were, had little fire departments, you know, in, in these cities. So, I just want to make sure when we're, you're, you're presenting the, the numbers to us, you know, that we're exploring all the options, you know, kind of what you said, Matt, are, is there an opportunity to still have a couple of these fire stations, so we're not necessarily building all brand-new ones at six point five million dollars? So, yeah, we would all like Cadillacs right now, but, you know, what, what can we do to keep and preserve, you know, what we currently have? So, but I, I do understand the need, you know, to, to update and, and, you know, I, I, this, the Deacon software is so impressive to me, so I understand that. But just as we promote this to our community, we want to make sure that we're showing them that we have looked at all options, and if we can use something that we have now, then let, let's try to do it if we have to update or, you know, whatever. So, just in the future, as we're looking at numbers, I would really like to see more detailed options on costs, if we had to expand or, you know, do anything for, for some of the equipment.
Absolutely. Your, your point's well taken, and I, I will say this, because I have people say stuff like that to me. I don't live in these fire stations. I don't spend the night in the fire station anymore. I haven't done that in ten years. So, I already have a nice office, but when I go to my nice office, I feel bad when I go to Station 503 and see how horrible that's, I mean, that station's horrible. It was absolutely terrible.
Bob?
Yeah, I, Larry, I, I just want to ask one quick question of you, and is this likely to be a, a bond issue, and does our bond capacity, i- is it enough above these numbers that it's not a big issue?
Right. I think that, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Huddleston, obviously, the concept of a bond is one that we're familiar with, and it is likely going to be one of the options that get introduced to the mayor and council. Obviously, there's a process for that to transpire, has to be put onto a ballot, and, and obviously, the voters have to, have to work, have to agree to that. And so, so the short answer is yes.
Okay.
We don't have any of those details today. We wanted to, again, just kind of describe the circumstances that kind of lay the foundation for what our, what our, what our proposal will be to the council, that will outline the financing options, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
But it is something that if we're going to get on an upcoming election, the, the statutes drive the fact that you have, you can only ask the voters for geo-bond obligations in November of each year. And so, I want to make sure that the council's aware that there's a timing mechanism, and there's a process that needs to go, that needs to be in place as well.
Okay. And I, and Chief, I do have a question about the Deacon software, but I, I want to make a statement first. Your, your justifications, your arguments for Station One and Station Three are well-founded. They were well-founded fifteen years ago. And while we, as a city, can be proud of Station Four, I mean, that, that is, that is something for the department and the city to be proud of, but our, our lack of attention, and I'm not pointing a finger at anybody, but, but today, it's our responsibility, this council, our lack of, of attention to Station One and Station Three, shame on us. We shouldn't have let them get this far. I am all for, I, I think, you know, you were asked about your priority between one and three. That, that's a tough call, and I think they're both a priority. I, I don't think we should knowingly say, well, we can wait on this one, let's, let's focus on that one. I think both of them should be a priority. The cost of six point five million for a station doesn't scare me. The, the cost of thirteen million for two doesn't scare me either. And just my opinion, I think if we go to bond on this, we should go for both of them. My, my question on the Deacon software, though, is you, you pointed out, rightfully so, that there has been stations built here and in other cities in places where they shouldn't be, and it, and it's, and it is because of, we don't really have that crystal ball to, to see where that growth is going to go. But does the Deacon software not only take into account the, the history of growth, but does it look at, and, and Larry, I'm drawing a blank on the term, area of influence, not actually the-
The planning area?
Planning area.
Yes.
So, city limits, but also the planning area. Does it take into account platted subdivisions? Because we, we have a pretty good idea of where development is going to go, and does the Deacon software, can it, can it predict, not predict, assess that and consider that?
There, there are portions of it that do, but Deacon relies very heavily on historical data.
Okay.
Because, listen, you guys have lived here way longer than me. This Florence corridor is not going to change.
Right.
It, there's, there's, it's not going to change overnight or in ten years where sixty percent of the calls are going to be at the north part of the city and forty down here. This area's going to get nothing but busier. It's not going to lower. It's going to get busier.
Well, thank you for the information tonight. It, it, in, in a lot of ways, it's a reminder, and in many ways, it's eye-opening. My only rhetorical question is, when do we start? Because I'm ready to go. Thank you.
So, and one more thing, I just want to make sure I'm super clear on, because I heard you say 501's and 503's. I'm asking for $20 million for three fire stations. I just want to make sure everybody...
I was going to remind him of that, Chief.
That doesn't scare me either.
Yeah. Listen, the bottom line is, I get it. It's a tough decision for all you guys and I get it. You guys get way different phone calls and emails than I get. But the bottom line is, it is what's best for the city of Costagrand. It's what's best for our citizens. It'll allow us, it'll allow them to provide the best services. That's what we want to do. I, you know, we talk about parks and golf courses and all these things, and I think those things are fantastic. But if you don't have a very, very good fire department and a very, very good police department, none of those things are worth anything if you're not safe when you're doing the other things. And you're not going to attract businesses and big businesses and restaurants and stuff to your town if it's not safe. And I think the police department does a fantastic job and I know we do a fantastic job. And I just feel like there's no other choice. We have to do this.
One little thing.
I'm just kind of trying to lay that out there easily.
All right. You'll get the last word, Chief. Sorry. Bob, I've had one more comment.
I just had one comment for the rest of the council. The new public safety facility out there right now, that was, I think, 23 and a half million for a bond issue. The community accepted it. They're proud of it. So, his number of 20 million, it's not that big.
Yeah, wasn't that bond about a $60 million bond?
Right. There were multiple questions.
There were multiple parts to that one.
Yeah. But I mean, the facility itself.
Right, right. It was like five different projects. That was the community center was part of that, too.
Three questions, five projects.
Yeah. So, all right. So, I get the last word.
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's my prerogative since I'm last. Just, first of all, a big thank you to your personnel, your fire personnel staff, our dispatch, your command staff and you personally. I know you guys work hard and you are a good fire department, obviously, with the I S O rating of a two. You're in the top 4%. That's commendable. Congratulations. That's awesome. And you deserve some better facilities. So, that being said, it's a 20 to 24 million dollar question. And when we spend, probably on average, at least a million dollars per vehicle, per truck, per fire vehicle, and I'm not talking Range Land vehicle, I'm talking the pumppers and the ladders. And they're beautiful facilities, beautiful trucks, believe me. I know I got to see one built up in Appleton, Wisconsin, and it's an amazing, amazing vehicle. So, we just need to make sure that we approach this right. I think the direction is pretty clear to Larry and staff, that we'd like to see the numbers. So, come back with a plan. You know, I also want to caution us, we really need to do something with 503 first as the north side of our community is feeling a bit unprotected at this point in time. And from an insurance standpoint, huge, huge potential expenses to a lot of people who are not within five miles of a fire station right now, that were a month ago or two months ago, whenever it was closed. So, I know that we're okay with the I S O for right now, but I know I have received several calls from insurance companies asking about that. And I said, "No." I said, "Our I S O rating is good. We're good for the next two, three years." So, I kind of squelched a little bit, but, you know, we need to... We need to at least appear that there may be a presence up there. I don't know. I don't expect anybody to be living there or staying in that facility because that's just not tenable. It just doesn't work. But I don't know what we can do to make it look like there's some bit of a presence there.
But we still use the facility as a training center.
Okay.
And keep in mind...
Good, good. So, we'll just say that it's open, but we're not staying there.
And we still have equipment stored there as well.
Okay.
I get, there is kind of a common misnomer out there sometimes where people go, "Oh, well, that's my fire station." That's not your fire station. 502's can be at a call at the promenade.
I get that. I'm just talking about from an insurance coverage standpoint. And I... You guys do a great job and I'm not trying to knock anything that you do. I'm just trying to suggest, from an appearance standpoint, we need to try and protect the interests of some of the folks who live in our northern part of the city. So, just keep that in mind as you move forward. I'm just asking you on their behalf, and there's a lot of them, and there's going to be more. If we open up Copper Mountain Ranch, that's 13,000 platted lots. 13,000 platted lots. So, that changes the whole landscape. And now, obviously, that probably means we need another fire station, but that being said...
So, just make it 26 million then.
Yeah. Yeah, well, let's just add another 6.5 million. So, anyway, and as you've alluded to, we are growing. I expect that growth to continue. Most of that growth is going to happen north of here, other than the industrial, that's going to happen west of here. So, and then, Mission Royale is kind of built out already, but I think moving 503 is, or 502 is a good idea because then it helps open up and take care of some of that east side over there. Ultimately, I think you're going to need another station over there as well. But that's once, you know, once we get courts and T I done and all the other things that are coming. So, hang on to your shorts.
Mr. Mayor, I know you wanted the last word and I know we've got a long meeting and